All right, good evening everybody. My name is Paul Knall. This evening we have a Board of Finance public hearing in which we will have presentations on the capital budget, which means capital projects, along with our operating budgets for the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education. And we'll also have a public audience on each one of those items. Before I do a few introductions, I do want to introduce the members of the Board of Finance. I have Peter Vasco, Nick Mason, Jeff Wollenthal, along with Barb Pettigie. All right, so those are the members of the Board of Finance. And Kevin Dorff could now be with us this evening. The presentations that we will have will be from Mary Glassman, First Selectmen, for the capital. She will talk about the capital projects that we have. Then Lydia Sedona will also talk regarding the Board of Education budget. And as I said, I will be the moderator for this evening. What we will do, I am going to go through and just give some highlights before I turn it over to Mary for a quick overview of the capital. Just a quick highlight, the Board of Finance, as I said, this is a Board of Finance public hearing. The Board of Finance is an elected oversight board. We balance the expenditures versus the revenues. We hold public hearings such as this on the various items that we have that are financial in nature. We approve the operating budgets and the capital budgets, determine what the mill rate should be after the voters have had a set or they save at the referendum, which will be coming up. We'll have you on that here. Let's put some of this in context as to what the Board of Finance, along with the Board of Education and the Board of Selectmen have been facing. And when we start the budget process, which we do towards the end of October, November, we start having our discussions. As everybody knows, this has really been a multi-year problem that we've had since 2008. While some things are starting to improve from a municipal standpoint, we still have our challenges. One of those challenges is constantly state aid, which does generate a good amount of revenue for the town of Simsbury. We also this year have a revaluation. We've had declining values over the last couple of years. The grain list has stayed relatively flat over the last four years. A revaluation does have an impact as we have the revaluation, has been approximately 15 to 18 percent reduction in the value. So that sort of thrown into the mix does create some challenges for us. We've also made sure, working with the two boards, that we shore up our pension obligations to the retiree programs that we have out there. And I'm sure Matt and Lydia and Mary and Paulson will talk about that a little bit further. But one of the big things is we've made the boards, in their budgets, do a reduction in the rate of return, the rate of investment return that we had previously. It was seven and three quarters, which we were using as an interest rate assumption. We have reduced that to seven percent. We spent a fair amount of time, or a lot of time actually, and expenses with our actuary to make sure that those were the right assumptions. And we feel comfortable that that is what we're going to do, what we need to do. And we will continue to monitor that every year as we move forward and make adjustments downward if we need to. There's also the benefit obligations that we have to have, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. We also have capital requests and impact on our debt policy. The Board of Finance has a debt policy of seven percent. Principal and interest for the town should be no more than seven percent of the operating budget. It's a Board of Finance guideline, but it's one that's been worked out with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education. And it's worked very well for the town, serves very well. Obviously, we also have concerns over the Hartford, what is happening with our largest taxpayer, and what that will mean moving forward for how much that generates of revenue to us, but also how much capital we can reasonably expect to approve over the next, might even the next two years. Okay, just a quick overview here. And there were, for those of you who are here at the amphitheater, there were handouts in the back that explained some of this. The Board of Selectmen came in at a percent change of 1.71 percent. Their new requested budget is $18,347,575. Debt retirement, meaning principal and interest payments that the town will have for projects that we have previously approved, will go up to 3.32 percent. We did go off the bottom recently for approximately $5 million bond issuance and got an interest rate that was incredibly low at 1.29 percent. The Board of Education budget, which really is the largest part of our budget, would go up 1.89 percent. That would bring it up to $64,918,869, which is about a 1.2 million dollar increase. Keep in mind, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education, because the Board of Finance has reduced the interest rate assumption on our pension obligations, that that is also a driver for those numbers. Otherwise, those numbers would have been considerably lower. The Board of Selectmen would have probably been in at 0.65 approximately, and the Board of Education would have been in at 1.58 percent. So a driver in what's going on there, but we do need to shore up. When I say shore up, I'm sort of giving the indication that there were problems there. There weren't, however, we want to make sure that it is solid, what not only our employees would expect, but also our citizens would expect us to do. So it's the proper due diligence. Non-public schools, that's gone up slightly at half a percent. So the total budget overall would be $90,82,018, or an increase of $1,716,213, or overall 1.94 percent, which is in line with some of the budgets that have been brought forth over the last number of years, slightly higher than last year's. And again, these are ones that are presented before public hearing this evening. This doesn't mean that the Board of Finance has approved these, that is ready for them to go on to referendum, however, we want this with from the public, this this evening, and then we'll have another public audience, a public hearing under the new charter, which would be April 24 is the date. I have to look at Mary and Harris, our finance director and treasurer, to make sure that she keeps me on the straight arrow on not only the numbers, but also on the dates. Okay, this is graphically, this is what the budget looks like. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, as there is a handout as well. Estimated source of revenues, this just briefly gives you an idea of where our source of revenues are, from a number of different sources that we have. This is coming in from non-property tax, but the big area is the state grants, where for 2014, we estimate $5,774,310 would be what would be coming in from state grants. So that's the biggest chunk of where we would get our money from, non-tax revenues. Again, a great graphic display of where that would come from. Allocation of the budgets, where they have gone over the years. This is a slide that has a lot of numbers on it. I'm not going to run through every one of those slides, however, it does give you an indication of where we were in the 2008, 2009 budget, followed by where we are in the proposed 2014 budget. All these numbers, by the way, for those people who are at home watching on SCTV, will be posted on the Simsbury website and also on the school website as well. Again, a graphic display of where those budgets have gone over the number of years. And you can see from now, obviously, the Board of Education is the largest chunk, followed by the Board of Selectmen, and then debt service. Non-public schools, it isn't going to move the dial one way or the other. And just a key comparison of key indicators as to where we are, another graphic display of where we are. This one shows a slightly different, adds a new factor in here. This is the Board of Selectmen operating budget, the Board of Ben operating budget, and then enrollment, which also is one of the big drivers. We can see it in the years, and I'm sure that Lydia will talk about that and answer any questions, but enrollment has been declining, which is a demographic factor for not only Simsbury, but for many, many school systems in Connecticut as well. Okay, tax implications, this is the big item here. Where is the tax implication? Our current mill rate, which on non-fire tax, is 31.47. That's the mills. Current mill rate, we adjusted for the reevaluation, would probably be somewhere around 36.46. And the reason I say it's around there, because there are a lot of factors that drive this, and again, we haven't approved these budgets yet. A new mill rate would be adjusted for reevaluation. If these budgets were proposed, would be 37.28 mills. So what that would do from a change standpoint would be a 2.25 percent increase in our mill rate, or 0.82 mills. So everybody should have gotten their adjustment from the tax assessor. They could take that number, divide it by 1,000, and then multiply it by 37.28 to get an estimate of where your taxes would be. Okay, from this standpoint, this is my portion of this. I'm going to now turn it over to Mary Select, Mary Glassman. And by the way, for those of you who can't see this, even though I went to Phlosta College, one of my girls did go to UConn. I'm on the scene today, so I know we're going to try to keep this relatively short, so we can...
I am the double Phlosta, so I will be double cast. Thank you. First, I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for all their hard work on budgets. Also, the Board of Finance, for the good input, and certainly Board of Education for all their hard work. I also want to thank Superintendent Matt Curtis and his staff and our staff, particularly Rich Switzke, our town engineer, who oversees our capital projects. So everyone did a great job. The projects that we're recommending here tonight all stick with the seven percent debt level that is recommended by the Board of Finance. We have 10 projects that we'll be submitting. Those, nine of those projects will be part of the budgets, because those are called within the recommended level in the new charter. One project, the Farmington River Stream Bank Stabilization Project, will go to a referendum. So people will have a chance to look around the budgets, which include nine projects, and separately on the referendum. The first project is a generator improvement project. I'll have to tell you, there's been five storms in the last 10 years, and one of the major, we got pretty good at responding to emergencies. And one of the things we've noticed is there needs to be some improvements in our generator capacity. This project was postponed from last question here's budget and is back here to complete emergency generation. I mean, the project total is $168,000. We have a breakdown of how we arrived at that number. Again, all of this information is available on our website, and it's available as well. Next project is the Simsbury Center area charrette infrastructure improvements. The Board of Selectmen did reduce this amount. We had looked at some other projects that had been included and decided to postpone some of the other portions, because it was a parking deck for Ena Hall. We're waiting to see saccorants that would fly over come in. So before you, tonight, before the voters, will be a continuation of our industry center improvements that we started a couple, about 20 years ago, with some through center design. This will continue to improve the sidewalks, the lighting, drainage, and also leveraging other business investments. This is the breakdown of the industry center improvements. We do have Matt, who we always show you exactly what the thing looks like and how he interacts. The next project is a Simmsberry Cedar Center design development. The Board of Selectmen just last night accepted a report from the Public Building Committee to look at the possibility of constructing or renovating Ena for a town center, Cedar Center. The Board of Selectmen accepted that report and will be sending a public hearing in May to get a comment to what we did, anticipating that before we send any project to the voters, we're going to have to have a detailed location, a site, three regular sites, and we also have to have some design numbers right forward. So this amount of 204,000 will help us design a Cedar Center once a site is picked, so that we can send that forward to taxpayers for discussion. The next item is an automated truck wash for the town highway garage. This is something that is absolutely necessary because of environmental requirements. It's also something that we noticed, the deterioration on our trucks with the use of chemical salt, and so the trucks need to be cleaned on a regular basis, and the town is to comply with environmental regulations. We are looking at some cooperative efforts, sharing with the fire department and the local areas towns to help reduce some of those costs and bring that product forward. We have a breakdown of how the $257,500 is going to go to the market. The next project is really a true maintenance project. It is a 20-year-old roof that we have on some of our town offices. This is something that we need to really take a look at and really replace before we have problems. There are also other heating, ventilation, air conditioning systems that need to be upgraded. The carpet was installed about 20 years ago as well, and needs to be replaced in certain areas. So this is a true maintenance project. We have a breakdown of price of $107,120 for this project. And again, this was another project that was earmarked last year and has been, was moved to comply with the debt levels this year. The next item is 10 town data, infrastructure modernization. We really need to improve the fiber cable connections for our town offices, Ena, and WPCA. The use of town services online is ongoing increasing. We now have more than 4,000 people that pay their taxes online. We have folks that need to get building permits online. So as we increase the usage and the customer service for our residents, we need to improve our capacity as well, so we have a budget for that improvements, and that totals under The next project is another roof. This is the flat roof replacement, $231,000, $230,000 for that project as well. And that's the breakdown of that project. More roofs, this is the year of roofs. Our project, one of the items that we have also noticed is that the Ena Mora Hall roof is 20 years old. We need to preserve the integrity of that building. We did receive close to a million dollars of grants to improve the interior, so we have been, and think to Ena recently, I think you'd be really surprised to come right within the time. Unfortunately, there's a grant for the roof replacement, and that project does need to be done. There was a question raised earlier about what if the town doesn't move forward with Cedar Center Ena, or does move forward, the roof needs to be replaced. This roof would have to be replaced separately regardless of what our future updates for Ena are. That's the breakdown of that project as well. The next project is the only project that will need approval by referendum vote. This is the Farmington River Stream Bank Stabilization. I want to thank the WPCA, the Commissioners of the Marking Control Authority, and again, Rich Switzke, for a great job that they do looking at our sewer needs. This is an interceptor pipe that needs to be worked on along the Farmington River. It's really important to make sure that the bank is secure and the piping is secure to avoid future environmental problems going forward. This amount is $147,300. This will be funded by the Sewer Use Fund, so the users of the sewer fund do pay the cost of the bonds, however, the town does need to authorize the funds, even though the sewer who's funding will pay the funds. And so that's why our town's board has to improve that project. We have a breakdown for that project as well. The next project is the Simsbury Public Schools project. This is the only project that the Board of Education has forwarded to the Board of Selectmen and to the Board of Finance. This is to replace a boiler at Simsbury Elementary School. This is a 1968 boiler, so you know, pretty basic mess with that one. This will improve drainage and ventilation systems, and the total cost for that project is $850,000. And the Board of Education did get a pretty firm proposal, pretty confident with that project. That project would also be approved within the budget, and again, only the Farmington Reserve stabilization project will go forward. Have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Mary. Okay, at this point, I'm going to open it up to public comments regarding the capital. I would ask that you go up to the line, state your name, your address, and then keep your comments to three minutes, although I am looking at the audience, I don't think we're going to have a woman number on these, but try to keep them to three minutes and to the merits of the question. And we'll try to, the Board of Finance members, or either Mary, Lydia, or Matt Curtis will answer questions. Anybody like to speak on capital? Mrs. Coe?
I didn't want to disappoint you. First of all, I'm very concerned that Mary Glassman has put the capital improvements to the temple and not at referendum, even though it's required as a charter. I think it should be as a referendum vote. You're talking about $1.7 million. That's for advisory. Property values have been reduced on average by 13.88 percent since revaluation, leaving a new toll in the grant list. Since property values determine the taxes, the town should formulate a budget consistent with the loss of property values. Since property values have been equated with income, a loss in property values should be reflected in the budget. If my income goes down, my state and federal taxes go down. Promoting a budget increase with an average of a 13.88 percent reduction in property values is unrealistic. All property values have been reduced, all town budgets should reflect the loss. According to Zillow Homes, my, in my zip code, will be reduced another 1.4 percent in the future. This does not correlate with the present budget. Why the big disconnect? I am concerned that the capital improvement budget has now become an offline account for maintenance. This is not acceptable. The town budget is filled with deliberately motivated projects, giving the golfers their share, the seniors their share, the greenway group their share, which accounts for more, which counts for the lobby groups at the expense of the majority of the taxpayers. The senior center should be incorporated into the Simsbury Library. Since the library has evolved into a community center, and most of the materials will eventually be delivered electronically, leaving large areas unused. The library is in the center of town, has parking, and meets the ADA requirements. Why has the slow cost option been ignored? There have been several articles about the loss of employment in the insurance industry. MetLife is moving to North Carolina with the loss of over 1,000 jobs in the Hartford and Simsbury. The largest taxpayer has sold many of its businesses with articles stating that they are moving out of Simsbury facility, leaving an empty building. This building will probably be demolished, leaving Simsbury with a greatly diminished grant list. Once again, First Selectman Mary Glassman is spending taxpayer money on issues that are out of control. The taxpayers funded a whim of a purchase of the Simsbury Airport that would lose over $200,000 a year, and the owners were not interested in selling. Now Glassman has appropriated over $30,000 to study what to do with the Hartford building when it becomes vacant. This First Selectman Mary Glassman has no control on the decision for the sale.
Joan, please just keep your comments to the merits of the question.
It has to do with the charrette, which is part of the...
Just keep it to the merits of the question.
Okay. Which has shareholders present for Hartford. Although Hartford is one of the highest taxpayers, the town has no control of Hartford's bottom line. The Hartford building will probably be demolished, and there will take over $46 million off their balance sheet, and 1.7 million of taxes as to death and advice. The taxpayers should not support another whim of political capital. I am very concerned that the taxpayers continually ask for millions of dollars in studies, charrettes, designs, they are never implemented. The town has continually hired consultants to review the town organization, and all the studies stated that Simsbury should have a county manager for government. First Selectman Mary Glassman, outside the horizon. Many of the town projects, the capital improvement budget should be placed in the operating budget, not offline in capital improvements. And once again, I would like to urge the capital improvements to be a part of the referendum, that they vote at the referendum, not at town meeting. $1.7 million is not what two people should stand up and vote for.
Thank you, Joan. Okay, is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Okay, then what we're going to do is we'll move over to the operating budgets, where we will talk about the operating budgets, and Mary, you're going to do the operating budgets between the boards at the first.
Thank you. Again, thanks to all our staff, the Board of Selectmen for their thoughtful consideration of the request by town. Our goal was to continue to deliver quality services. We did have a number of pressures on our budget. We'll run through those. I was wanting to put this budget in context, to show you how conservative the Board of Selectmen has been over the last five years. We do have a breakdown of how we spend the gathers that our taxpayers give us, through years to go over some cost-saving efforts, and then put forward the adopted budget over to this, this end to it. Some of our goals were really to provide public health and safety. Our health department is our largest department, so we spend a significant portion of our police, our police protection, by ourselves. We did prioritize providing quality services. We wanted to make sure that Simsbury continues its rankings as one of the top towns in Connecticut. We did have a number of pressures on our budget. Those were that other businesses are facing dollar terms, cost increases, pension increases, contract settlements, and increasing cost of utilities and material. At times, our expenses are going up, our revenues are declining. So we ran this reduction, we have a reevaluation here, state aid reductions are looming, the possibility of losing our car tax revenue, and questions about the future of Hartford in terms of... This puts this Board of Selectmen budget in context over the last five years. Through cooperative efforts with our employee unions, give backs, wage reasons, pension contributions, you can see that our budget was able to stabilize and even reduce our budget in 2010, so you can see that cooperation of our town employees. This shows you the Board of Selectmen budget, and the Board of Ed budget, and the debt budget as well. And you see that over the last five years, those budgets have been relatively stable. We tried to show you what the average, what the median tax assessment is in the town of Simsbury, to give you a sense of... to give you a sense of what our residents are paying taxes and how we spend their funds. This year, you can see over the last grand list, median tax assessment has really changed. But this year, the median assessment is about $193,000, which indicates that the average home in Simsbury is about $276,000. What that means is the median, when you take the current grand list, if you look at the median tax bill in Simsbury based on that assessment, the median taxpayer pays approximately $7,484 in taxes. So that gives you a sense of what the average tax bill is. Where do we spend those annual funds when they come in? You can see that the funds are distributed to the Board of Education, the Board of Selectmen, and non-public schools and debt retirement. While we do collect fire different taxes, those are not spent by the town. Those are directed to the fire department. So that's an additional, part of your annual tax bill. We then broke down the annual tax bill to monthly costs. You can really get a sense of how we spend the dollars on a monthly basis. You can see the two largest pieces at Board of Ed budget at 4.5 and Board of Selectmen budget at 1.3. If you look at the median tax bill over the last eight years on Board of Selectmen budget, you'll see that the median tax bill on a monthly basis has been about $123. That was in 2009, went down 2010, stayed at $122 in 2011, stayed at $122 in 2012, and has proposed $123 a month in 2013. So the taxpayers in Simsbury for the town budget are paying the same monthly cost as they have since 192009. Those monthly costs went to police protection. We have 35 support personnel, that is our largest department. We gave about $33,000 calls for service last year. Road paving is our second largest department. We pave about 164 miles of the town roadway every year. And the next is also, part of that budget is our snow removal and drains. That's not counting the disasters that we've had over the last few years. Library services, another piece of our budget. It might find it interesting to know that, you know, very busy library patrons in town in Simsbury, we circulate about $477,000 items a year. Our town hall services, we process land use applications, building permits, inspections, registered voters, and issue various cases. In our engineering department, we process about nine capital projects currently valued at $8.2 million. And we received grants totaling about $3.8 million in the last few years. Now, emergency response, something we never used to calculate or quantify. Now we find we're actually keeping track. We have five major disasters in the last two years. 5,000 people have registered on CT alerts to get information immediately as we receive it. We have now entered into Twitter's tweets and we've issued 64 storm-related press releases just informing our residents where they can seek shelters. This is a graphic design of how our budgets break down, reflects some dollar amounts. You can see of the $125 per month that come into the town for services, $27 of any one cents of that goes right to public safety, $24 goes right to public workers. You can see how the largest components of our budget. We took a look at the Board of Selectmen eight-year budget comparison and we found in the years from 2005, the budget actually increased about 22%, 23%. But during the difficult economic times over the last several years, our budget actually decreased about 1.6%. This is another graph of our town full-time employees. You can see that one of the really significant ways that we've been able to reduce costs because we have reduced, not full vacancies in our town staff, we've been able to do this through regional cooperation in cases or through use of technology, particularly the tax collection department. A lot of our taxpayers now paying online and that's reduced our costs. Some of the other ways that we try to reduce our budget is through trying to get grants. We've received more than $8 million in grants over the last seven years. We have a grant, a budget grant for Eno Wardwall. We have volunteers who've sat on the boards of commissions and also volunteer at town hall. When we used to plan a full-time welcome reception position, now that's completely provided by volunteers. Our retired health plan switch saved us large amount of money of over $200,000. We have the highest number of online taxpayers ever and we have also received energy grant awards as well. Took a look, our budget's always made up of expenditures and revenues. And we've taken a look at some of our revenues that we've actually seen some increases. We have a significant amount of increases in our economic development area. We have about $17 million in new projects coming online, which means an increase in our building fees, convenience fees, and recording fees. We also have, unfortunately, not seen an increase in our state aid, but we do see other revenues now, which shows a stable in the next couple of years. Our tax collection rate continues to be very high. We are fortunate that we collect about 99.5% of all our taxes. So we're grateful for the people who pay their taxes. We are experiencing some increases in foreclosure, which puts other pressures on the town as well. In some cases, the increase in the tax collection indicates that banks are now paying the taxes on some of those building arms for local businesses. To put the budget in context, the increase is requested by the department staff. It was about 5.59%. The budget that I recommended was of 0.50%. The Board of Selectmen added back just a small amount of money for a landing consultant for Hartford and additional funding for a school resource officer after conversations with the Board of Education. The budget we're presenting to you also includes $190,000 increase because of pension interest rate assumption change. The Board of Finance did recommend that we include this in our budget and after discussions with the Board of Selectmen, it wasn't included in the recommended budget. There were also adding back funds for part-time building officials with this increase in economic development activity. Increases for the Farmington Health District to make sure that all of our restaurants are properly inspected. I'm sure they'll be happy to hear that. Increases also for settled moving contracts. Happy to answer your question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, at this point, we're also going to take public audience on Board of Selectmen operating budget. Mrs. Coe?
First of all, I'd like to state that I'm probably the only person here tonight from the media public. And I think it's absolutely shameful that people don't come out and support their budgets or talk about their budgets or ask to have it reduced. It's a shameful display of Simsbury politics and Simsbury participation. And I think they ought to scan the audience to see, just have three people, about most of the people up on the Board of Education, Board of Selectmen, and that's about it. And it's shameful. First of all, I'd like to talk about the CNR, which is part of the operating. Why has the Board of Finance increased the line pool on the CNR budget? It appears that this will decrease the operating budget and make it appear that spending has been reduced. Most projects with the maintenance that should be in the operating budget, not CNR. This is moving economics. The golf course has not made money for years. This year, no fees were raised and now the golf rauins asking for carpeting. The taxpayers should not subsidize the golfers. Every year, we have appropriations for trucks. What happens to the trucks that are replaced? Why have road improvements been included in CNR when the town appropriated over $2 million for roads? Is this double dipping? Now, we'll talk about the operating budget. It's very short. The budgets presented are inconsistent with the economic times. There is a reduction in the collection of $360,907,357. Assessments are reduced on average 13.88%. The Simsbury Farms fund is deficient by $96,374 and the town continually adds money from the taxpayers to make the supposedly self-sufficient fund whole. Why hasn't the town continually placed $50,000 of the town budget for Main Street Partnership, a nonprofit organization? Although they do an important job, they should subsidize by the Chamber of Commerce, not the taxpayers. Since alcohol consumption is allowed on town profiting and I have noticed barrels of Simsbury Farms filled with beer cans and bottles, how much money is collected from the recycling of these products and where does the money go? The actuarial assumptions used in funding the pension funds are over-zoomed. The town has assumed a 7.5% return on investments, but changed that figure to 7%, still too high. It also assumes a projected salary increase of by 4%. This is not attainable in the economic climate, leaving our pension funds deficient. Investments are down, revenues are down, property values are down. There were 700 residents unemployed in Simsbury as of January and that doesn't include college graduates who can't find jobs and those even no longer looking for employment or underemployed. Foreclosures are up. The banks pay the taxes on the foreclosed houses, but empty houses cannot spend money, leaving out businesses with fewer customers and neighborhoods blighted. Any increase in the budget is unacceptable. And once again, I would vote no for the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Coe. Anybody else who'd like to speak on the Board of Selectmen operating budget? Okay. We're going to move on to the Board of Education operating budget. And doing that presentation again this year is the chairwoman, Lydia Tadler. So I'll go over to Lydia for the presentation. And then what we'll do is we'll all come back for public comment.
I really can't see anything for you in the UConn news, so we're going to move through this. So bear with me. Good evening. Tonight, I'm presenting the overview of the education budget for 2013, 2014. And I'd like to welcome our education members here. Tara Moore, Todd Burrows, Susan Simeon, Blake Donnans. Thank you for being here. And also Central Office Administrators, Beth Gers, Erin Murray, Sue Palmer, and Mary Earp later. And I would like to thank administration for the preparation of this budget. And for those watching at home, there are prior presentations of the budget on our website. So, the Board of Education adopted the budget on February 26, 2013, and the Board of Finance moved the budget forward to act 2013. This presentation will review major cost drivers, budget history, and benchmarking our district with the other districts. The budget is framed to respond to the key challenges. Number one is improvement in difficult economic times. And number two is responsibility responding to the vast education reforms and critical evaluation. The Board of Education budget is before you. As you can see, the requested budget is $64,918,69. This is a 1.2 million dollar increase, which represents the increase of 1.89% and includes additional pension contribution of 0.3% recommended by the Board of Finance. Before you are some upward downward pressures. In our planning for the responsible budget, there's a lot to consider. These are factors, the downward upward pressures, that help to drive costs down, but also pressures that may drive the costs up. The downward pressures include our ability to reduce five school reductions in staff as enrollment drops, the economic climate in Connecticut, and the Board of Finance guideline of 1.5% for the 3% pension contribution. Upward pressures, they include the significant reform in teacher evaluation, the implementation of common core state standards, the changes in the needs of our special education population, and the changes in technology, as well as the school security. These factors are reconsidered comfortably as we planned. For example, we included a shared portion, as Mary had alluded to, to the cost of a school resource officer. The middle school is also going to be available for the elementary schools. Before you are major budget drives and our negotiated contracts, health insurance, coupled with requests for some staffing to address the reform efforts that are before us, account for a budget increase of 3.1%. However, savings from nine teacher retirees and a decrease in staff due to decline in enrollment offset much of this expense, resulting in a net increase of 1.89%. With the additional recommended pension contribution, the budget increases 3.3% to 1.89%. Grant funding is an important aspect to our overall plan. The school district receives restricted and federal grant funds. We project stable funding for the 2013-2014 school year and will maintain awards of over $3 million, which will be used primarily to fund staffing. This chart demonstrates the total projected expenditures of the school system. $68,118,721 includes the grants that we receive. When the grants are subtracted, you will see the net general fund budget increase of the 1.89%. This slide represents a snapshot of the budget history and reflects certainly the most modest increases since 2009, 2010, which correspond to the national economic downturn, as well as our local decline in enrollment. Comparably, Simsbury Board of Education approved budget request is among the lowest reporting budgets today. There are 21 districts with the same or lower budgets reported out of 111 districts that the Connecticut Associations of Public School Superintendents track. Data from the Connecticut Association of School Business Officials demonstrates Simsbury's percentage increase is lower than 81.1% of the 111 districts reporting. We continue to look ways to control costs. The facilities and enrollment task force study is underway, as is the technology task force. We continue to look for ways to engage cooperative efforts with the town and other entities. This graphic represents the recent decline in enrollment, a trend we're seeing statewide and one we pay close attention to during our planning process. While enrollment has decreased, so have our staffing levels. Our current budget is reflective of that as well. Over the five-year period, enrollment is down about 10%, while staffing is down about 7%. We talked a lot about return on investment, but it's also very important to know that we celebrate our successes in Simsbury Public Schools. In what has been especially challenging budgets, it's important that we benchmark both our costs and achievements as a district. We're proud of our student achievement and the academic and extracurricular opportunities that our school district provides each and every one of our students. This graph compares Simsbury per pupil cost of $13,560 with the state and the DRG, which is the district reference group, which are comparable districts per pupil average cost. When taking the difference between Simsbury and the DRG average, you can see the potential impact that over $1 million would have to the operating budget. This slide was headlined on in December 2012. And this year, the state created a new accountability school rate index, which you may have read about in the Hartford Current and Ex regular. school rating index, which you may have read about in the Hartford Current and in the media. Under this system, Simsbury schools have always done very well. Both Terrapoe and Henry James Memorial School have been identified as schools of distinction. Simsbury High School is rated as the best, highest performing high school in the state. This slide demonstrates the difference in the per pupil cost relative to the other districts presented. Simsbury receives a high return with a less than average cost. This is a chart that compares Simsbury High School cap performance with the per pupil cost among the DRG, as I mentioned before, the white school districts and other schools. The yellow diamond, as you can see, represents Simsbury's performance. Simply said, no district in the DRG performs at a higher, performs higher at a lower per pupil cost than Simsbury. This is one of my favorite slides here, not just because it's got nice colored stars, but it does, it also does exemplify, we can talk about celebrating student success and what we do for our students, and these are the burning clusters. Simsbury High School is the culminating experience for our students. The clusters represented before you are elective opportunities for our students, and we've been able to expand these clusters in recent years through budget support. Each cluster is part of an identity growth sequence that prepares our students for college and career readiness. We continually receive positive feedback regarding these opportunities, and we can compare our elective offerings with any comprehensive high school due to the variety and the quality of the courses that we offer. Responding to the educational mandates has been a focal point of our planning process. And I'm sure you all know, we read about the educational mandates that were passed last year to the governor's education forum though. Our budget requests include funding to support district-wide improvement and response to reform. The budget includes four instructional coaches who will work at different levels to support the teacher instruction in the classroom. This is very vital and very crucial as we respond to the Common Core state standards that I mentioned before. In addition, of a 5.5 grade teacher is included to enhance the intervention program for students in grades K through six. A cumulative increase in the special ed staff of one of the positions to address structural needs such as a department supervisor at Henry James. In addition, $60,000 in increased funding to enhance technology use at the primary and second year levels. In total, there are $406,000 associated with the staffing request, the equivalent of a 0.6% increase to the operating budget. Overall, we will see a reduction of over six full-time positions due to the enrollment In summary, this Board of Education budget represents an increase of $1,202,757. And the last slide is the non-public school budget. This line highlights the non-public school budget required by state statute necessary to cover mandated services such as nursing and transportation. And that is the end of the Board of Education budget presentation. I want to thank you for your time, and we look forward to hearing your comments and answering your questions.
Okay. At this point, we'll go to public audience, same rules as we've had before. Three minutes, and we'd like to speak. Mrs. Coe.
I'm the only person here. I'm the only person here from the public. I didn't set the stage. Okay. I'll let another person. Thank you. Thank you for attending. General Code 26, Whitney Bryant. All the issues I've discussed about revenues and expenditures are true to the Board of Education budget. There's declining enrollment, enrollment growth, global traffic, and the budget is still increasing. Mandates for performance evaluations can be enforced with principals and heads of department. There is no need for three vice principals at the high school. We spend over $100,000 for security with three different organizations reporting, leaving a hole in the chain of command. Sending security to out-of-town games are costly and not needed, since every town supplies their own security. I am concerned that more and more money is being allocated for charter magnet schools for a few students and the expense of taxpayers to enrich their studies with buses taking them to their out-of-town schools. Why should the taxpayers support enhanced education for a few students? These entities have been losing money year after year and should be eliminated or paid from the correct budgets. I am concerned that the initiation of all-day kindergarten has placed many students in a one-size-fits-all curriculum. There have been many studies on early childhood education and the maturation of children at the kindergarten level. There has been discussion of red shirting, holding children back to give them time to mature. There have been discussions about non-rated education, where students move from one route to another as they mature. Since there were projections of fewer children entering kindergarten every year, I would like to have the kindergarten through second grade conform to a modified nine-rated education, moving the children from a pre-kindergarten program to a more complex curriculum at the second grade level. It appears that this modification would reduce the staff and enhance the educational experience of the children. Why can't the program be implemented within the Simsbury schools? Does the Board of Education have the projected cost of educating all students through graduation after the grant money is no longer funded? It appears to the budget that mostly the money appropriated is for staff. What quality education would be reduced if a vice principal from the high school and an assistant superintendent was eliminated from the budget? We are facing hard times, and we almost cut back on our spending. The quality of education should not be dependent on how much money is spent, but how we allocate our resources. We all can do the less, so can the Board of Education. All budgets must be reduced as presented. I would vote no for the budgets tonight, as presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Coe. Would somebody else like to speak? Nearly none. Then what I would do is basically just summarize. Just a couple of quick things. As I had said at the very beginning of this public hearing, this is just to get ideas and thoughts from the public, along with the ability to, for the two boards to present their budgets as well. I just want the public to know that we are still going to look at, Board of Finance still is going to look at the issues that are of concern to us, which is the revaluation along with the state budget and concerns over the Hartford. So we will be looking at the operating budgets, and particularly also at the capital requests that are out there. I know I have some additional questions that I want to address to the two boards, and we're going to have our opportunity to do that as well. The next step in this process is a second public hearing of the Board of Finance, which will be on April 24th, followed by a meeting that evening to decide what to do about the capital request along with the operating budgets. Then the next step after that is the town referendum. I believe the Board of Selectmen has set that date for the town referendum? No, it hasn't been set yet? Okay. In my charter, you're not required to do it until, I would go later in the process. So I do want to thank those of you who did attend this evening. I do share Mrs. Coe's concerns about the number of people who show up at the public hearings. It's been declining over the years. However, part of my thought of that is that boards have been presenting very reasonable budgets. The tax increases have been below the rate of inflation. There have been no outstanding major issues, although last year, we did have a number of people show up and support all-day kindergarten. So I'm looking at what's going on in other towns, the requests that are coming forth from their boards of education and their municipal budgets, which are considerably higher than what we're seeing tonight presented. So that's my thought on it, although I certainly would like to have more people show up, because the two boards, along with the Board of Finance, do a tremendous amount of work in prepping for these meetings. So with that, that's all the business that's been brought forth from all the hearing. We've ruled our business this evening, so I'm going to end the meeting and thank everyone for their time. Go Huskies. Thank you.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.